Welcome, good evening to um our this yeah the oh my gosh okay. Good evening to the RU City Council meeting um can you call real call?
Glenn. Tovar Contreras.
Present.
Kaplan.
Here.
Jan.
Present.
Klobas.
Here.
We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
We will now have the prayer Pastor Michael Job please.
Good evening let us let us pray dear gracious heavenly father we thanking you this evening for the opportunity to gather oh heavenly father we ask and pray that you bless this meeting dear lord god we ask and pray dear lord god that you touch each and every one of these RU City Council members oh heavenly father and dear lord god just just bless this city oh lord god and bring it together as one oh father god and just let let their agenda go forward dear lord god and be mindful of of what they're saying and everything dear lord god and just let your will be done we thanking you and praising you for all that you have done and what you're gonna do these and many blessings we ask and pray in Jesus Christ's name amen.
Welcome to our sixth RU City Council meeting um of the date June twentieth twenty twenty-three um I am the vice president our president is gone today so I will be filling in so and this is my first time doing this if you couldn't tell so please bear with me um um we call agenda item four?
Yep. Item number four A petitions and communications oral communications from the audience please limit your remarks to five minutes and to items not on the agenda.
If anybody would like to say something um you have five minutes to do it.
Yes hi my name is Mary Grace Clements and I am currently the interim city manager and I wanted to just come here to support you in what you're doing I think it's fantastic I'm continue to be impressed by what the youth in this town are doing and I just think it's wonderful that you're stepping up to be future leaders and committing your time to the community and we welcome it and I really respect what you're doing and thank you very much for what you're doing.
Thank you. Okay.
Item number five.
Five A business items update on the youth fair from each council member.
Um we had we held a youth fair May twentieth right before school got out yeah and we used the Career Tech building at the high school so thank you for letting us USD three oh eight letting us use that building it was basically just a a um event where kids and family could come and learn about our summer activities and um organizations and so we had vendors show up for that yeah.
I'd like to just thank all the vendors that did show up and supported uh what we we what we did um I appreciate the I appreciate the um people whether it was parents or actual uh teens or even children themselves um I I do think it went well for our first event I was pretty proud of how everything was set up and how smoothly it went.
I would also like to thank USD three oh eight for allowing us to use the Career Tech building otherwise we wouldn't be able to have an event so that's pretty important and I would also like to thank the following vendors Hutch and Harmony Wisdom and Motion N double A C P Youth Chick-fil-A Boys and Girls Club Rise Up Reno Youth Philanthropy Disciples of Dirt Hutch Zoo Family Community Theater and Hutchinson Public Library for supporting our event I agree with my counsel I do believe it went well for our first time obviously there are some things we do want to work on for example the music there is a lot of running around with that yeah but I believe that we will be able to make it even better next year and I would like to again thank everyone who participated for supporting us for our first time we were a little nervous if you guys couldn't really tell but I would also like to thank everyone for going you know going through about going through with us.
Um I would like to thank all of the vendors that came and I would also like to say that I think we could have done a better job in advertising it's not really out there and um we did not have very many people that came and even if they did they were mostly adults and I think that could have been better but I think we did a pretty good job overall.
Um going back to what she said for advertising maybe next year we can maybe go around to the schools and ask that they also advertise because I know what most what most of the advertising that we did it was from mouth to mouth like through word of speak right so I was hoping maybe next year we can advertise it better by letting the school know what we're doing so that they can be on board.
I I know that we did have flyers that we I know that we did have flyers that we uh were meant to hand out and I don't know if it was a problem with the school or what but unfortunately they did not get out before uh school ended up uh closing so I do think that that will be something that we'll have to be on our toes for next time.
Yes again I would just like to thank everyone who participated and not just including the vendors but um for I'm what would like to thank the city council um for um helping us advertising it and support supporting us and that and and again I would like to thank USD three oh eight for supplying the building. Any further discussion? Any further discussion?
There you go.
Okay. Do I say the next one?
Yes.
Okay five B update from from update from Juneteenth attendees.
Um so at Juneteenth we had a um it was a it was held by the N double A C P youth group and um they um we had a few vendors and there was Hutchinson Hospital Horizons Hutch and Har- Harmony and um Ruby and Lexi opened opened the talent show and um the present the prizes were different for the different age groups and it turned out really good and it was really fun.
Um so Juneteenth was a three day celebration of the national holiday and on Thursday we had a talent show and yes I did participate in the opening with Lexi Joe who's who happens to be in the audience so um we opened it up and it was great to see all the talents in our community there was many different things there was gymnastics dancing singing and there was actually eh what was it a skit that you and your sister performed yes and it was really entertaining to see what everyone brought what what their talents was what their talents were and how they perceived them and it was a great way to see what our community can offer and what our community can do which is which is why I really liked it and on Friday later on in the evening we watched Wakanda Forever the second Black Panther movie and I think that was a great way to finish part of the Juneteenth event event and on Saturday the N double A C P youth was in the farmer's market and they were offering information for what they did and offering any a list for anyone who wanted to sign up and um a follow-up on the vendors uh Hutchinson Hospital they offered cardio artery scans which is basically blood pressure checks blood sugar checks and info on SIDs and they helped the community members with applications provided information on health and insurance they also helped represent the S A N E the sexual assault group spreading awareness and doing face paintings and raffles which is a great way uh Horizons was also presence which offered information on mental health very important in our youth demographic today Hutch and Harmony which is offering voter registration and other information on the service they offered as well as resources for the community and that was some of our vendors I know that there were other vendors too but I would also like to give a thanks to the N double A C P youth group for hosting it it was a one it was a wonderful celebration and I really enjoyed it thank you.
I sadly could not attend this event but it sounds like a blast and um I was just reading here that Ruby our treasurer was last year's talent show winner so good job and um Lexi who's in the audience was the talent show winner two years ago so good job to both of them.
Next item five C the discussion of a youth center what priorities do we have in forming a youth center geared to local youth twelve and over? What hours of operation would be most beneficial things to include and progress made since last meeting?
So I'm sure a lot of you uh heard I'm sure a lot of you heard the discussion um in the back room due to the whole microphone error um but we were thinking of um adding of having a snack bar a game room and a book nook those were the three main things um and I think that that those would be very beneficial to helping uh our young community to settle down and feel like they have a place uh to just lounge and maybe even call a second home um I know there was some discussion about a destroy room where you just bring things in and take your anger out on them I do think that would have a lot of liabilities as fun as it does sound so I do think that we will have to further discuss that.
Um we have talked about this youth center and I think if we since we're coming to the end of our session I think we really need to get if we want to get anything done on it we need to like we need to schedule time and work on it really hard and so I think if we we should we will come up with um each have like a certain job that we need to um get done in order to make this thing more possible.
Um going back to hours of operation I know I we we're always like we're already tired of surveys at this point right but I think it would be beneficial if maybe we were to write a survey to our schools and see how much of their population would be willing to participate in our youth centers that way we can kind of work around our hours of operation see which one would have more kids be able to participate and in things to include I know we said the book nook we have to find out what books we would like to include for what kind of books are popular amongst our demographic and for the rage room I love liabilities I know but maybe we can get them to sign a waiver and kinda like for the destroying stuff we could ask people to donate their old things that they don't need so that way to you know help clean up our community a little bit as well.
Um one of the other things that we could do is have a food drive during it and have it open to where if they needed to they could or if they wanted to they could um and we could give that to the food shelter and we could also look into um what different types of games the kids play or kids want to play and we would also need to look at um a billiard room?
Yeah I think it's called a billiard.
Um. Just a game room.
Okay um with like maybe some I wouldn't say pool tables but maybe like foosball but I think I think we should definitely do some more looking into that.
Kinda going I'm sorry. Kinda going back to what uh Ruby was saying about the surveys I do think that would be very beneficial to us um creating this whole thing because we definitely need to know where we need to invest our interests and spend money and know what to spend money on.
Um yes and I was also wondering perhaps maybe modes of transportation like after school for kids who don't have anything to do after school or they can't get home right away after school maybe maybe we can get like a bus or some other form of transportation to take them from school to the community center and maybe a form of transportation just to get them back home or something like that.
I do think that is a good idea but um I think we should probably uh do that later in the um business I guess just cuz we don't know how busy this is gonna be and we don't know how many kids are actually going to want to be there so I'd say depending on how popular the whole youth center gets that's when we can decide if we uh enforce buses or not.
Yeah it kinda goes both ways like I'm not trying to disagree with you per se but um we we do need to talk about it because if it is a problem getting kids there because we don't have a mode of transportation and and we need a motor per mode of transportation to get more students there that could definitely be one way to get um the word like app kind of.
I definitely think that should also be something uh that we put would put on the survey.
Like right after if they would be willing to participate maybe asking would you be willing to participate if a mode of transportation was provided or?
Or like asking how many people would need a need transportation.
I think that is a good idea.
We could also put on the survey how um like what other ideas they have cuz they could have fun ideas that we're just not thinking of right now which could would be um great for them to experience stuff that they would like to do also.
I know we also discussed um our hours would be like six to
I think it was either like ten or eleven.
But yeah.
That was like before we discovered there was a curfew for us. Yeah.
Or did we do an earlier starting time?
I think we did an earlier starting time because I think it would be difficult to have a mode of transportation like a bus going from the school to the thing if it starts at six so I think it would go right after school until curfew of whenever we figure out what the curfew is.
Could I give it a suggestion to you guys?
Yes.
We're gonna have to have this wrapped around before the next election uh you guys only have two more meetings until we go so we need to have it I would suggest we need to have it ready or you need to have it ready before the next school year starts so we can give the surveys out at that time.
Yeah we discussed um I believe I can't remember who but someone already mentioned um having sections that we will work on uh and we will each one of us will um figure out what we would need what we would have to put in the survey for the sections and how much that would cost and all that stuff.
So you're gonna get this uh put this on executive session that you will go to in a meeting with the with the board directors to get this ready before we come back next year?
Yes.
And maybe you get some information on your last two meetings what you found after you get together with the survey okay.
I think it would also be helpful for next year's session to like write down somewhere that they can have access to of everything we've done like the youth fair if we want that to be continued or 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 not the youth fair yeah the youth fair if we want that to be continued or um continue working on the youth center and we had a couple other ideas this year that we just couldn't get done and I think those ideas were really good and so if we could establish how to um make those become real that would be um a great opportunity for our community. Any further discretion?
This is kinda trailing off from the original discussion but yes I do think that it's very good uh for next year whether it's uh how many people come back or whether it's totally new people I'm sorry if that is the case. I do think that we should write them either individually write letters or one big letter from all of us explaining maybe some tips or tricks or some ideas or some just anything that could help them out next year.
Ooh speaking of letters um this has nothing to do with that but um I think we should write I don't I don't think we already did it write letters to all the our vendors that participated in the youth fair to um show our gratitude towards them so we'll get that done too.
Uh going back to what Adelaide said I think it would be very beneficial I would hate for this to be the case but if one of us does not end up coming or returning to the RU City Council I think would be very beneficial if we were to write what we did what we learned and what we can what advice we can give the new council members so that way we don't have to start from scratch.
Any further discussion?
Next item.
Okay next next item.
Five D it was suggested to change the date and time of the RU City Council meetings what are the pros cons and hurdles to this?
I think it's it's definitely a pro to um at least talk about it because some days don't work um especially since we have school activities and stuff after school some dates don't work um so if we could have um different date or um date or time or both to um this meeting being held.
Let me bring you up to date the last time we talked about that we s looked at going to a Monday night at six o'clock instead of a Tuesday uh cuz we had problems before a lot of you guys couldn't make the uh Tuesday night meetings so it was suggested that we go to a Monday night six o'clock here instead of a Tuesday night that's where we left off at last time.
Um a Monday night at six would be good I mean our I think our schedules are more flexible now I I'm speaking for me I don't know about everyone but um especially because we're out of school and so we don't have after school sports or clubs or practices that we have to be at but I'm just speaking for myself so I don't know if anybody.
Um I think that is a great idea but I think one of the cons would be if one of us if we are still to get reelected and stuff like that if there was a new person we'd have to talk about what time would also work for them but for the Monday night at six speaking for myself of course I think that would be great.
I agree uh Monday night would work well for me though with whoever we get on this council we're always gonna have an issue with um them not being able to come or it interfering with some sort of after school activity I do think that um I do think that um seeing as we are in school and we know the schedule. That we should uh definitely come together and talk about when most games are. Or when most practices are and try and schedule this around those.
Well, I know a lot of like after school practices for my school are like every day of the week. And so practices will be kind of hard to get around, but I think um. Um like games and stuff, like actual having to be there type um events. Um we can figure that out.
Um I feel with the U City Council meetings, we don't really have to work too much around them specifically because they only occur every third Tuesday. Maybe now Monday, but hopefully that won't be too much of an issue.
I would just say, any night would work for me. Um because I'm not in very many after school activities. Um but I would just say that changing the time for parents who work later might work a little bit better. Um whether it's either earlier in the day or um even like thirty minutes later so that they have time to get food before the meetings. Um and get ready.
But I also think like going back to what Ruby said about how there's gonna be a new session and we have to consider those. Um new people's um opinions. I think it will be, we don't wanna have to change it. I think we need to change it once and then stick with that because we don't wanna be inconsistent. Or be too flexible because then people won't know when their, when really to come because it's so flexible. Any further discussion?
I think I would just like to add that, um as the board for this council. We've been really blessed to see a lot of you in a lot of extracurricular activities, whether it's in sports or community. Or after school programs or um just volunteer work. And so one, we wanna thank all of you, even those that are running the back of the IT. Um it all takes that skill and we're just grateful that all of you are so committed to giving back to this community. And just thank you again for doing so.
Well, thank you for the opportunity because we couldn't really do this, do this U City Council without our board members, so thank you.
Thank you.
And that being added, ladies, I hope you run again cuz we need experience. Trust me, as a council member, you need to have experience. People, and uh young people come back on here, which is great, but we need people, now that you have experience, we need that. So you know what's going on, so I hope you consider about running. Okay?
Any further discussion? Next item.
Closing remarks by council members.
I thank you all for coming, once again, I thank the vendors who helped uh support us and our whole youth fair. Um I just appreciate all the people who have helped us pull this through and have really helped. Helped to support us, I, I, as Maggie said, we definitely cannot do this without you guys, so thank you.
Yeah, thank, thank you guys, um but our, our board members were a big contribute. And also the people who come and watch our meetings are, um you guys are the ones we're doing this for. You, our community, so thank you for even coming and um giving your time to listen to us. Um and yeah, sorry for the, yeah, cuz this is my first time, so thanks and sorry.
I think you're doing a great job, Maggie.
Thanks.
Um I'm gonna be going down the list. First, I'd like to thank our new city manager for showing us her support, it's very highly appreciated. It takes a whole lot of pressure off our backs, let me tell you. Um I'd also like to thank again the vendors who participated in the youth, in the youth fair. We definitely learned, we definitely know what we wanna do if there is a youth fair next year, we definitely know what we wanna happen and what we want to approve. And then I would also like to thank the NWACP Youth Program for hosting Juneteenth, it was a wonderful event. And I'll be very blessed to come back again next year. And yes, we do have a lot to get done for the, for the youth center, I think that's what we're calling it. But it's an idea, it's a plan and as long as we have our minds to it, I believe we can do it. And for changing of the U City Council meetings, we will have to see. But I do agree with my council members that I think we should find a time that works very well for all of us and then we just stick with it. But thank you all for coming and I hope you have a good evening.
Um so I was just going to mention that um the Summer Academy from the Family Theater. Um has a. Acting program that they're putting on this Friday at six at.
Emmanuel Lutheran Church, it's on thirtieth. Um it's, yeah, it's a theater camp that um kids the ages through five, all the way up to eighteen. Participate in and they learn every, they learn singing, dancing, they learn a skit and then they perform it on Friday. So if you would like to go to that, that is at Emmanuel Lutheran Church, um it's right across the street from like A and W and. Mom John Silver's, that's what it's called, um and so if you'd like to come to that, that's, that's then. You can continue, sorry.
It's fine, um and I would like to thank all the vendors that came in for the um Junior NWACP. For holding um such a wonderful event, um we had a lot of fun and. Um all the vendors that came to that, um they were all very helpful and they were all very kind. Um and I think changing the time and the um days would probably work better. Um but that is something that we would have to discuss later on.
Yes, sir, Vice Chair, I'd like to mention, this is not their last meeting, they have two more meetings to come and I think they've done a fine job so far. So don't think that you're gonna see them two more times before they sign off and you act like this was a sign off time, it's not. You're not getting out of your contracts that easy.
My sign off time.
Last thing I'd like to ask, if our new city manager would come up, would you come up there, please? Before we, uh I'd like to see if you guys have any questions for her, remember you have to do everything in an open meeting. So do you have any questions for our new city manager, the youth council? Anything's on your mind? Don't put her on the spot too bad.
What would you like to see from us as the U City Council?
Well, number one, being involved, that's the most important thing. And I think it's vital that you are communicating the things that will help you. Feel more connected to the community, more involved in the community, in a safe, fun. And in a way that you feel enriched to continue to want to stay in this community. Cuz what we're hoping, what I hope that I see from this is by you being engaged in the community and involved. That you're going, you're going to want to stay and continue to move the community forward and grow. Cuz you're the future of the community and we wanna make sure that, that we're giving you the tools to set you up. To continue to be helping it continue to grow in a way that people wanna stay. That's, that's what's important, I think. And so, so gonna look to you to say, what are the things you need and I, and I made a lot of notes about what you were all talking about. And I think it's a way that we can figure out how we can help support those needs.
Um this sounds kinda weird, but um what was your name again?
Mary Grace.
Mary Grace.
Clements, mhm, it's not weird, it's okay. There's no question that you can't ask that is foolish. It's not a problem, that's what, that's what this is all about, so I think you guys are doing a fantastic job.
Thank you, thank you so much for your support, it means a lot to us.
Yeah, and I, I think, I think the survey is really vital, I think because you, what, what I'm excited about is finding, is you. Finding your voice and finding out what your needs are to feel connected to this community and not lost in the community. That's what's important. And from someone who, who realizes that I, it, it still shocks me when I hear people say that there's nothing to do in this community. Because there's a lot to do in this community and we have to continue to support each other and, and support all the different events. Even if it's not anything you've ever tried, get out there and try it and see, you might learn uh, uh, of an area that you didn't realize that you could. Be inspired by or um connected to. And one of the things I get from this is, is inspired, I'm inspired just by watching what you guys are doing in this room. And I get really, really excited about the future of the community.
So anyone who has tried to start something from the ground up, always has trouble uh gaining popularity with it. How do you suggest we go through with that, other than just advertising?
There's many different ways to advertise things, I think what you've said is important, is you've recognized where you could improve upon things and you can't give up. Because the success is not come, does not come from the things that you've done well. It's always about how you've built on the things you've done to continue to move it forward. So trying something is always important, trying to learn where you can get better at it is what's vital. And so what I heard from this group was, your youth fair was, was great, but you were starting to recognize how you can do things better. I think number one, word of mouth, I think a plan of action, communicating the plan of action, everybody being involved. And asking for help, I think that's, uh you have to recognize you can't do it all by yourself. And finding out what your strengths are and helping each other lift each other up to do those tasks, not one person can do it. You've gotta have a team that does it and that's what I see here.
Um this is more for me, but what exactly is your role as city manager?
Well, since this is the beginning of my fourth week. And to be honest with you, I've never, um my background, I've not done government work before. I have a, a background in, in industry, I've done nonprofit, I've run my own business, so I have a vast knowledge of many things. And so my role in city management as I see it, and what I see as my role, is we have subject matter experts. We have people that are very good at their role and my job is to make sure they have the tools to do their job well. And to make sure that we're listening to what the community needs are, we're making sure we're being fiscally responsible with the dollars that we're spending. But the most important thing is that we're transparent in how we're spending those dollars. Because we can't make every citizen happy with what we're going to do, but what we can do is be in front of them and talk to them and say. This is what we're doing and this is why we're doing it and this is where we're going with it. And if, and sometimes that's the hardest part to do because people are not always versed in doing difficult conversations. Sometimes it's hard, as you're experiencing, to put yourself out there. And sometimes it's hard because you want to do something for everyone, somebody wants a game room and they want video games. Well, someone wants a foosball table and so it's hard to make everybody happy, is that, is that a fair statement? But what you've gotta do is come up with a plan that is fair to all, communicate your message. And then to, tell the people who maybe didn't get what they wanted, say, let's figure out a way that we can get that too and working together. So it's staying focused, being responsible, being transparent, being honest. Does that, does that make sense? So my job as I see it is to do all of those things to help the city move forward and continue to move forward. The biggest thing that I see is not doing what's good for, only for what's right now. But what's gonna take this community forward five years and ten years from now. It's making sure we're put, putting an infrastructure in place that's gonna keep us moving forward, does that make sense?
I got a couple of things to ask our city manager that you guys didn't ask that we know as board directors. Ms Clements, we have a couple of things, number one, we was working on um to get them um. Uh we had an ordinance involved with the old city manager, he was working on that. We need to have that ordinance finished, hey, I don't know if you need to look into that.
I don't think I need, I need more context to that, what, what was the ordinance?
Can you help me on this on the ordinance, you know more about it than I do. The ordinance was, uh where was he at on the ordinance? Come up to the.
So I believe where we left off is he was talking with Paul Brown about putting back into the, the bylaws. An ordinance for the existence of the U City Council to make them an official entity of the city.
Oh, okay.
When they got started last year, we were under the impression that the ordinance still existed. We found out mid-year that it probably did not, um he was working to get that put back. And then obviously that got dropped.
Okay, so to put it back in is a part, is an entity within the city?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
Thank you.
Yes.
Also, Ms Clements, is, um, well, he's looking at, he said something to us in the fact that. He was gonna try to get the young council a budget cuz we will be an entity of the city.
Okay.
Um there's, they have no budget right now. So we talked to him, or they talked to him about us doing volunteer work to have people uh give us money. And he thought, we asked him if we could do that and he said he didn't think that was a very good idea for a, a committee or. What an organization of the city to ask for money, so I don't know how you feel about that.
Couple of things, number one, the first step would get it recognized as an entity to the city. The second thing is, I think if we're going to make this a true representation of what a city council does. Part of the major part of that is budget. I think it's, it's a very um vital entity for you to. Learn that experience, um not just for a city council, but just for your future. Because I think it's important, there's things i- if you want to put more into the youth fair, if you want to advertise, if there's a, a youth center. I think it is important, um if there are funds, could we find funds, we're still in the budget, budget process right now, but. First step, let's get it into an entity, I would support trying to find something, ev- be it small.
Yes.
But what I would be looking to this council for is what are the things and the priorities that you would want? And do you have an idea of what kind of money you would need? Because it's not going to be a blank check and I would want to see that there is some focus as to what we're trying to strive for. Like I said, it shouldn't be something we want just this moment, but what are we setting it up for the folks that are coming after you? And how do we set that up for sustainability, that's what I would be looking for.
Okay, well you gave us some structure, what we should do. One other thing, the last thing that I know of is a building. Okay, at one time we was looking at, or I was as a council member, cuz I know all the buildings that the city of Hutch own. I was saying that maybe we can get a building that we don't, that we don't uh are not in right now and it's part of the city. If we could get that to let the youth council run their youth center out of it, the only, because they can't afford a building, okay? So that, they would come up with some buildings or we can get with you on some videos, buildings that the city owns or maybe we could see something that. Cuz the building's the boat, the biggest cost that we would have to have a youth center.
There's, there's lots to that.
Okay.
Um truthfully, building, insurance, liability, safety.
Right.
Security, I mean, there's, there's multitude of that, so to say a blanket yes, that would be, that would be unreasonable and not transparent. And that's not what I wanna do, what I would say is that we would entertain the ability of talking to the community to find out what's out there. Whether it's city owned or other entities uh to see who would want to support and are there um different grants? To support things, I, I don't know that. Um for me to sit here and say that we would use a city building, that's, I'm not in a position at this point to say that. I think what, the need is there, I think the need for, for that, but there might be other avenues and other things to do. I mean, I see a lot of things on Main Street, you never know, I mean, and where is it, where is it located that's most feasible for everyone? Is there a part of a school that maybe a part that they are willing to, we don't know yet, but I think there's avenues to research, but. Uh to say that we would do a city building. We don't know yet, but I think there's avenues to research, but, uh, to say that we would do a city building at this point would be irresponsible of me to offer that up, until I could research it more.
Well, you gave us a lot of ideas where we were...
Yeah.
Not, but I wanted to bring this up so you understand where we're at, as a board and as a city.
Well, I, I love the direction, I, the need is evident. Um, but it has to be something that's gonna entice all, and you're still in the, the discovery phase of all that information, and these surveys and things are gonna help understand what the needs are. Is it gonna be handicap accessible? Is it gonna, I mean, there's all these different things, ADA compliance, that, that come into the play in codes. That's when we get to real work, is what I'm learning. So I think, I think you're on the right direction. I think that we have to have more structure, I think that's where we're headed and where you want to go. And I think if you come up with a plan, which is another part of the city, is to come up with, what is our strategic plan? Where do we want, what do we want the, for the youth of this community? What would you wanna see if you could do it in a year, in three years, and in five years? That way you can come to the city if there was to be money, what are we budgeting for? Do we wanna put money aside for a building? Do we wanna use some for your youth fairs? That's all part of how you do a, a city and how you run the budget, and that's things that you could learn.
Okay, well, that helps us. So is there anything else you gotta ask the city manager?
It won't be the only time you see me here, so, you know, it's not a one and done, okay?
Thank you.
Well, thank you for everything you're doing.
Thank you.
Did we get all the closing remarks?
Yeah.
Okay, um, next item.
Oh, it's adjournment, so we need a motion?
Yes.
To adjourn?
Yes. Adjournment, give a motion to adjourn, get a motion.
Will someone make, I can't do it, right?
Right, cause you're running it.
Yep.
Okay, will someone make a motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn.
I second.
Adjourn.
No, she calls roll.
Oh, okay.
Glenn? Tovar Contreras?
Present.
Kaplan?
Present.
Yon?
Yes.
Clovis?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
They say we're adjourned.
We're adjourned.
Good job, guys, good job.